Thank you, everyone, for coming to the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting today on Monday, June 16th, 2025.
We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you.
At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening this evening. The Lee County Board of Commissioners had the young commissioners. Normally, a tradition for them to start the meeting, and we appreciate them. We're going to hear from them here in a few minutes. You have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additional items to add to the agenda? I do have four items that we need to, actually, five. We have add-on items. Under Consent Agenda, item 2O is the Microsoft Tyler Technology and Davenport Group Support and Licensing for 2025-2026. Add-on item number 2P, Budget Amendment Number 61625/18. Item 2Q on the Consent Agenda is Replacement Vehicle Purchase for Lee County General Services. Item 2R is add-on Budget Amendment 06162519. An add-on is item 2S is the Replacement Vehicle Purchase for the Lee County Health Department. These are all issues that have to be addressed prior to the first... Okay, we're not there yet. Any additional items to add? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to...
Take off 2N?
Yeah.
To move that to regular business?
All right. Moving the item, Public Safety Warehouse, item 2N from the Consent Agenda. What did I do with my pen? There it is. Sorry about that. And under New Business, did you say?
There were all. I'm not sure which one's under.
It'd be New Business. And we'll put under Old Businesses, 4C, and that's Public Safety Warehouse. Any other items on the Consent Agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of the 2025 Lee County Young Commissioners Leadership Program. And we do have the first individual. Please introduce your name.
Hello, my name is Addison Tenard. I am part, I'm the president, the current president of the Lee County Youth Young Commissioners, and I'm also a rising senior at Lee Early College. But specifically to here today, I am here to be your 2025 Youth Voice Representative for Lee County. But before I introduce everyone else as a part of the Young Commissioners, I want to speak about something that is really, that feels really important to me and that I would like to share with y'all before, obviously, we introduce them. So I wanted to talk today about book bans. So according to Penn America, across the United States specifically, in the 2022-2023 school year alone, over 3,300 book bans were recorded in public schools, which is a 33% increase from the previous year. A lot of these bans are due in part to like certain, certain, let's just say, themes like race, or identity, or mental health. And a lot of these experiences are very relevant to young people today. But these are not just statistics. A lot of these voices are being silenced. I know for me personally, I have read a lot of these banned books in schools, stuff like The Hate You Give, or Mouse, or Night. These books are being removed from classrooms, not because they're harmful, but because they're honest. And as a student, for me, I really understand that reading the right book just changes everything for me. Like, a lot of these books just make you really empathetic about someone's situation. They provide clarity. They really help you, like, it just sparks empathy for someone who just wants to walk in someone's shoes and maybe read about other experiences. But when people ban books, they don't just restrict other ideas, they restrict growth. And we send the message that certain identities and experiences don't belong on shelves, on classrooms, or shouldn't be talked about at all. And as a young person, that leaves me questioning, how can we prepare to lead the future if we aren't allowed to understand the present? So for me, we're not really asking for like a disruption in the curriculum, just that we should have a choice. So we're asking to be trusted with stories that impact us and that are very important to us and just impact, reflect the world that we're living in. So of course, I understand that the critique that a lot of people get, that these stories are complex, they're not meant to be shared with children right off the bat, of course. But context matters, and that's really important. So teachers, parents, they can obviously guide through the difficult content, but just removing a certain book altogether just really doesn't protect anybody. It just isolates them. So basically, just banning books doesn't really protect children, but it just limits them. So hopefully, we can create a place where every student sees themselves represented on a bookshelf and also learns to see others, too. And yeah, that's Re for Youth Voice. So now I would like to call up the young commissioners up if they'd like to introduce themselves. There are just a few of us tonight. But yeah, just to introduce myself again, my name is Addison Tenard. I am a rising senior at Lee Early College, and I am the current president of the club.
Addison, real quick, what's your plans, your future plans?
My future plans, I would really love to work in, I really want to major in public policy in the future. I would really love to work in Washington. I think seeing all that happen is just really cool to look at, and I really want to make a difference in our federal government, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. This is my first year in Young Commissioners. My name is Tanner Riekel. I go to Central Carolina Academy, and I hope to preserve, pursue in architecture.
I'm Talitha Heimbecker. I'm a rising sophomore at a St. Leadership Academy, and I would like to move to New York when I'm older and start figuring out my options from there.
Hi, my name is Brantley Dill. I'm a rising junior at Lee Early College, and my plans are to major in political sciences and potentially work in Washington, DC one day.
My name is Alana Twiliger. I'm a rising senior at Lee Early College, and I plan to major in chemistry and then go into pharmacy.
Capturing all these notes. Everyone wanting to go to Washington. Oh, my word. Get a job with a lot of money before you go. All right, enough said. Thank you. Questions? Yes. We need to get a picture with all of our young commissioners up front here, so if I can get the commissioners to come forward. And, young ladies and gentlemen? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the public hearings for the proposed 2025-26 fire district budgets, or fire district rates, excuse me. And I will open the public hearing for the 2025-2026 fire district rates. Public hearing is now open for the fire district rates. Do I have anyone speaking on behalf of the fire district rates as presented? Do I have anyone opposed to the fire district rates as presented? I have an email that is in reference to this. "Commissioners, I would speak against the proposed fire district rates, but I am unable to attend tonight. Please read my comments into the public hearing." David Smoke, 96, North Ridge Trail, Sanford. "I and every other citizen appreciate the value of our local fire departments, including during the recent flooding event in downtown Sanford. And I'm also aware of the increasing difficulty in finding any volunteers within our society, and that includes our volunteer fire departments. While I fully expect the proposed rates to be accepted, I would like to speak as a warning that if these rates continue to rapidly increase, eventually more citizens beside myself will start speaking up and seeking more efficiencies and cost controls to be considered. In 2020, for the Carolina Trace District, my fire tax was $198.26. For 2025, my fire tax rate was $264.70, representing a 33% increase. This new schedule will increase my fire tax for 2026 to $291.59, an increase of 47% in six years. The combined budgets of the county fire districts has grown from $3.2 million in 2021 to this proposed combined budget of $6.2 million in 2026, an increase of 94%. Of course, there are many reasons for the sharp increase of the fire district budgets. Two include inflation and a growing population, as well as fewer volunteers, which needs more paid staffing. I am not trying to revive the old attempt from the county to impose one uniform tax rate, but I continue to believe that eventually some sort of county-wide approach to our fire tax services will be required to control these rapidly increasing costs." Thank you. That will be in the record. Anyone for the fire tax rates that are proposed? Anyone else opposed? For or opposed? Going once? Going twice? Public hearing is now closed on the proposed fire fiscal year 2025-26 fire district rates. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. I am opening the public hearing for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. Public hearing is now open. We just ask if you come before the podium to speak for or against the current, the proposed budget, that you please state your name as well as your address. Anyone in favor of the proposed budget? Anyone opposed?
Good evening, Commissioners. Alan Rumel, 1001 Northview Drive in Sanford. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Education, but as an individual member, a taxpayer, and a father of two kids in our public school system. I'm here to speak against the proposed county budget, not just on behalf of our schools, but on behalf of the very priorities this board claims to value. For years, the message for many here has been, the Board of Education must demonstrate performance before a meaningful increase in investment will be considered. Since the 2022 election alone, our school system has taken serious measurable steps forward. We completed a district-wide performance audit, leading to dozens of operational changes across all departments, brought in new district leadership, and created a strategic plan, our first in over a decade, conducted full education program reviews, and aligned curriculum across schools, carried out an internal investigation to address student safety concerns. We successfully advocated for legislative action around ESL programming, and there is employee compensation legislation containing direct verbiage from our letters and resolutions to the North Carolina General Assembly currently being considered. Central office was reorganized, saving about $300,000, which was reinvested into classified staff pay earlier this year. There's a facilities assessment in process to inform a long-term capital plan. For the first time in recent memory, we presented detailed budget proposals directly to the county, which we were not invited to do this year. We commissioned a paying classification study. We created an ADM projection based on county TRC and building permit data to make informed estimates of future capacity needs. And we've modernized our communications tools to better engage families. All this work is laser-focused on one thing, creating a school system centered on student safety, growth, and family engagement. But we're reaching the limit of what can be achieved without real investment from this board. We're struggling to recruit and retain essential personnel, and much of this challenge stems directly from issues highlighted in our pay study. Classified staff pay has been neglected for over a decade. From 2009 to 2022, the school board failed to bring a classified step increase request to the county. When we discovered this in 2023, we brought the full context and a request to start fixing that. We've made a partial start, but we can't finish it alone. Supplements for long-serving teachers are inadequate. Principal and assistant principal compensation has fallen behind regional peers, and central office salary structures are out of alignment with both responsibility and market standards. You can say these are state-level problems, but other counties across the region and across the state have stepped up. They've chosen to invest in children. We've done our homework. The Board of Education has provided historical data showing that there never was adequate county funding to address the longstanding pay issues. Still, we scraped together enough to begin addressing them this year. Meanwhile, the proposed county budget prioritizes things like a new athletic park, which seems to be primarily intended for private leagues, a new library, both things that I think most people would consider are wants but not needs. What about the schools? We asked for mobile classrooms, and we got half. We asked for funds to cover inflationary costs just to maintain existing service levels, and even that was a fight. We're working hard to create a culture of excellence to attract and retain quality educators and staff, but culture alone won't keep people's lights on. A positive work environment cannot make up for wages that don't pay the bills. Employee morale is built on a foundation of a fair wage, and without that, even the best culture collapses. We're making real progress, but we need you, the elected stewards of our county's priorities, to step up and make the investment required to sustain it. Supporting education is economic development. It is public safety. It is community health, and it must be part of your vision for the future. You were elected to set priorities and make tough decisions, but when a commissioner proposed a motion to identify potential budget cuts, not cut them, but just identify options, to fund school system needs last year and then public safety needs this year, things that nearly all of you claim to support, the board voted that down. A motion to identify potential cuts. I really don't understand it. That is literally your job, to do those things. Other counties, like Harnett just recently, they plainly said, and this is just a paraphrase, but they said, "We're going to fund the schools, and we'll figure out the rest. We'll figure out how to do it." That's leadership. This isn't about partisanship or who deserves credit. It's about doing what's right for the people who call Lee County home and trust their children in our care to receive a quality education. Please fund the full school system request for fiscal year 2025-26. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the budget? Anyone speaking against? Please state your name as well as your address.
My name is Jennifer Krawinski. My address is 1633 Pickard Road, Sanford. I stand before you today as a former employee of the Lee County Public School System. I worked at Southernly High School from the fall of 2017 to the spring of 2023. Before that, I worked in the corporate world for 12 years and decided to pursue a career in education because I am passionate about education and truly believe that a good education is the key to freedom and opportunity. Since then, I've obtained my bachelor's in English education and my master's in English with a concentration in literature, both from NC State. I currently work in Wake County with several former Lee County school employees. I'm here today not because I want to come back to work for Lee County schools, but because although I am no longer employed here, I do still live here, and I invested, I have a vested interest in my community. I do not disparage growth. In fact, I welcome it. However, Lee County cannot effectively grow without providing the necessary infrastructure. If we do not create a school system that is attractive for teachers, who is going to want to come work here? What will happen with this influx in our population? Classes will be more overcrowded. There will be an increase in teacher burnout, and we won't be able to replace them, let alone add new schools to support the population growth. Our schools have fantastic teachers, but they are leaving in droves to work in places where they are more supported and financially compensated for their hard work. What does this mean for our schools and the students who attend them? The outlook is bleak. On May 28th, 2021, the Rant published comments from an email they obtained that were made by Commissioner Smith in response to a 2% supplement increase request. He responded that Lee County teachers should not get a raise due to mediocre performance in our schools. This was a hard blow, especially as a teacher of English II, which hasn't, and of course, state mandated test. I do not hyperbolize when I say that the members of my former cohort are some of the hardest-working people I know, and they never give up reflecting and fine-tuning their practice to try to help students achieve proficiency. Not once does it appear to have been taken into consideration that this mediocre performance may not fall solely on the teachers. It wouldn't take much research to look at my performance data in EVOSS, which fluctuates from year to year. The growth indicator on the Teacher Value Added Report says that if you fall between a negative 2 and a positive 2, you have met expected growth. Every year I have taught English II, I have met expected growth, except in 2023. In 2023, I did not meet expected growth with an index of negative 3.36. And the following year, my first year at my current job, I met expected growth with an index of positive 1.22. What is the reason for the huge disparity in 2023? I am the common denominator. So why should pay be based on performance? When we are not treated as degree-holding professionals, we go to places that will treat us as such. Allowing highly qualified teachers to leave rather than pay is not a solution. Replacing them with underqualified individuals is not a solution. Our kids deserve better. When we do properly fund public education, it sends a message to the community that we do value the power of a good education. A child's right to an education should not be up for debate. If it were truly a priority, the money would be found. Thank you.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yes. K.R.I. Viasin Victor E.N.S.K.Y.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Kayla Gonzalez, K.A.Y.L.A. Gonzalez, G.O.N.Z.A.L.E.Z., 2080 Pathway Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today also as a former employee of Lee County Schools. I worked as an English teacher at Southernly High School from August of 2018 to January of 2024. I currently work in Lake, Wake County Schools, but I was born, raised, and continue to live and grow in Lee County. I have a vested interest in this community and the success of every student that passes through the doors of a school in Lee County. I chose to leave Lee County Schools after three and a half years due to subpar beginning teacher support, a lack of administrative support, and all of that resulting in a startling lack of support for the underserved students that live in Lee County. As I said, I grew up here. I was here when Sanford got its first Chick-fil-A, its second high school, third middle school, and our first Starbucks. I've watched this community grow for the past three decades. And while I'm proud of the growth, I've watched the community bring in unattainably priced housing while the underserved communities continue to flounder. It's a tale as old as time. The rich keep getting richer, and the poor keep getting poorer. These problems can't be fixed overnight, but the solutions begin with supporting our children. History has shown that education is the doorway out of poverty, and we can't open that door for our kids without supporting the teachers that provide that education. Sorry. I completed a research project while I was obtaining my master's degree that allowed me to take a deep dive into the root cause of teachers leaving the classroom in rural counties in North Carolina. There's an undeniable link between teacher retention and rises in student achievement. When teachers stick around, students thrive. How can we keep experienced teachers in our classrooms when a 25-minute commute to work would guarantee a raise of thousands of dollars? I'm talking like seven to eight grand a year. How can we keep beginning teachers in our classrooms when the county refuses to allocate valuable financial resources to targeted training and student intervention? It's not just about teacher pay. It's about investment in our education system as a whole. So what are the high-performing counties doing differently? They're investing in their beginning teachers. State statutes only require school systems to assign a mentor, who doesn't even have to be at the same school, and provide targeted training with no definition. As a beginning teacher in Lee County, I had a different mentor each year for the three years that I was in the beginning teacher program. And the targeted training took place once a month in an off-campus setting where I was trained alongside elementary school teachers in teaching practices that had little to no relevance to my own classroom. In Wake County, beginning teachers are supported by a campus-based mentor coordinators. They have county-provided training over various topics, and they are provided a consistent mentor. With a revolving door of teachers in Lee County, jobs are being filled by beginning teachers that are not receiving adequate support. And the student data reflects that impact. Commissioners, if you want more than mediocre performance, consider the investments being made by the county commissioners to financially support our educators and keep them in the classroom. We have classrooms full of selfless individuals investing in the children of Lee County. Consider who is truly responsible for supporting those efforts. Our community deserves to have their education valued. Our students deserve better. Our teachers deserve better. We, the citizens of Lee County, deserve better. Do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in support of the proposed budget? Again, please state your name as well as your address.
Hi, I'm Mary Murphy, and I represent the Boys and Girls Hub of Central Carolina, and we are located at 1414 Bragg Street in Sanford. I want to begin by thanking you all for the recommendation of a grant award. I want to begin by thanking you all for the recommendation of a grant award for the upcoming fiscal year. We deeply appreciate your continued commitment to supporting nonprofits doing important work in our community. As you know, this year has brought unprecedented challenges to nonprofit organizations. Rising costs, increased demand for services, and funding uncertainties have made it more difficult than ever to sustain the critical programs that families rely on at Boys and Girls Club of Central Carolina. Despite these obstacles, we remain steadfast in our mission to serve the youth of Lee County. This funding will allow us to continue providing a safe and supportive environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive. Whether it's helping with homework, offering a hot meal, or mentoring a child who needs guidance, every dollar helps us make a lasting difference. This grant will support and help us stretch limited resources to meet growing needs. At Boys and Girls Club, we're proud to do more with less, but we can't do it alone. Each year, approximately 75% of our budget must be raised through fundraising efforts. While we are deeply grateful for the vital support we receive through grants, it's the generosity of our local community that helps fill these gaps and brings our mission to life. Tonight, we want to thank you for recognizing the value of what we do and for standing by us during times when our work is needed most. We respectfully ask for your approval of the fiscal year recommended budget and this critical grant allocation. And if you don't mind, if I could pass out a letter to each of you early, please.
Thank you. Anyone opposed to the budget?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bill Huggins. I live at 1495 Kentucky Avenue. I am the Chair of the Helping Hand Clinic Board of Directors, and I'm here to talk about the allocation that we received. We are very grateful for the commission to give us the $2,500 that we received. We're especially grateful to those commissioners who lobbied on our behalf to raise the amount from $0 up to $2,500. Over the last 20 years or so, we've been receiving $5,000 of a reimbursable grant, meaning we spend the money and we get the money reimbursed to us. And we understand that this year, we did turn our application in late. A good part of that was because we received the application after the deadline. We actually turned the application around within three days of the time that we received it. I personally took it down and turned it in so we could get it in as quickly as possible. The Helping Hand Clinic is the only organization in Lee County that's dedicated to providing quality medical care for those who are uninsured in Lee County. There's nearly 25% of the population in Lee County falls into that category, and a lot of those people are people who work, but they work at jobs that don't provide insurance, and they don't have anywhere to turn except maybe going to the emergency room of the hospital. And the hospital actually values what we do in terms of taking people out of their emergency room. We're the only organization that doesn't ask when somebody walks in, "Do you have insurance?" They walk in, we say, "What's your problem?", and we do the best we can to deal with their problem. We have volunteer doctors that help us. We have 27 volunteers total. Some of those are doctors, some of those are nurses, some of those are people that just come in and do admin stuff for us. But we also have employees. We have a full-time pharmacist. We have an executive director. We have a nurse practitioner, and without these people, we couldn't continue to provide medical care. And we do need money to do that, and although the vast majority of the money we get comes from donations from the citizens of Lee County and from the businesses and churches, the money that we get from Lee County is beneficial to us and it helps. Every cent we get helps us to serve more of these uninsured people. We would ask you to consider reinstating the additional $2,500 so we get the same amount that we've been getting. We are very good stewards to the money. We don't waste money. We spend money for one purpose and one purpose only, and that's to provide healthcare to the people that would otherwise not get it. And again, we thank, I know Chairman Smith has been down to see the clinic and tour the clinic. You're all welcome to come down and tour the clinic if you want to see what we actually do. We're open four days a week. We'd like to be open five days a week. We're only open for half a day. 8:30, 12:30. We'd like to be open more than that, but our limitation is the amount of money we get. So every dollar we get is very meaningful to us. Again, I thank you for your time this evening, and I do have a handout that I would like to provide.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in support or opposed to the current budget as presented?
Good evening. My name is Bob Finch, 1414 Carthage Street, Sanford, North Carolina. Vice President or Vice Chair of Helping Hand Clinic. My personal experience with Helping Hand Clinic was dealing with my grandmother, SMA Stewart. For many years, we're in the doughnut hole with her insurance coverage, and Helping Hand Clinic made it possible for her, lived to the age of 90, by filling in, providing her medication. Thank God for Helping Hand Clinic, and that's why I've served the Board and will continue to serve and invest my personal resources in Helping Hand Clinic. I would hope that the Board of Commissioners would consider all the folks who fall in the bucket hole, or those who don't have insurance, and those folks who are working on jobs that don't provide insurance. We're there for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Diana Stepanik, spelled S-T-E-P-A-N-I-K. I volunteered to speak this evening...
Your address, please.
Oh, 19 The Point, here in Sanford.
Thank you.
I volunteered to speak this evening, again, also on behalf of the Helping Hand Clinic in the hope that you will restore their funding to its previous state. I'm not a patient, but I have personally brought patients to the clinic, to include my own son, who was uninsured and had nowhere else to turn that he could afford. Without the free services that the Helping Hand Clinic provide to those in need, short-term or long-term care, our community would not be showing compassion and care for its residents who have the great need. As a retired healthcare provider, I know that without physical and mental wellness, individuals are less able to remain productive and contribute positively to their community. I know that budgets, the one that you are having to propose and to pass, are a challenge. The needs are greater than the money available. But I would request that you take a relook at the monies that you will give to the Helping Hand Clinic so that they can continue to serve those within our community who have the greatest need. As was stated, they have a wonderful, dedicated staff. Paid or not, they are there regardless who has a need but can't afford it. So again, please relook at your numbers and see what you can do to reinstate the full amount for the Helping Hand Clinic. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone for or against?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Ortiz, and I'm at 113 Zion Church Road, Sanford, and I proudly serve on the Lee County Board of Education. I'm here to speak against the proposed budget. Shortly after I was elected to the Board of Education, I reached out to one of our county commissioners and shared something that I had learned after years of working in the real estate industry in Lee County. One of the very first questions families ask me when they're considering a move to Lee County is, "How are the schools?" That question matters. It influences where people choose to live, where they raise their children, and how they engage in their community. The commissioner's response was, "Well, they have a choice." And yes, families do have choices. Public, private, and charter schools. But here's the reality. Most private schools are out of financial reach for many families, even with the opportunity scholarships. Charter schools usually operate on a lottery system, and when a student leaves for a charter school, the funding leaves with them. That leaves our public schools with fewer resources but the same responsibilities. It is not a level playing field. In just a few months, in just a few short months on this board, I've had the honor of visiting many of our schools, attending events, and seeing firsthand the heart and hard work poured into our students every single day. Our superintendent leads with clarity and care, and he is backed by an incredible team of administrators, staff, and teachers. These people are doing everything they can, but they can't do it alone. Earlier this month, the Harnett County Commissioners discussed fully funding their school board's budget request. That's what partnership looks like. That's what it means to prioritize education, and that is what our children and the people who serve them deserve. Our students are not budget burdens, they are investments. Our teachers are not just employees, they are lifelines. Our classified staff are not just support, they are the heartbeat of our buildings. I had a comment made on one of the posts I posted on Facebook, and it really struck a chord with me. It says, "A community is only as strong as its public school system. An investment in our schools today is not just about this year, it's a return on investment for years to come. Even those without children in the school system have a stake in what happens in our schools, because if we don't invest now, we'll pay later, in high taxes, lost opportunities, and the strength of our community." So I am pleading with you all to please fund the Lee County Board of Education's full budget request, show our kids that their future matters, show our educators that their work is seen, valued, and respected, and show our community that Lee County is serious about being a place where families and children can thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for or against?
Chris Dossenbach, 105 Lindbrook Drive, here in Sanford. Good evening, Chairman Smith and fellow Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Not only is the superintendent of Lee County Schools, but as a lifelong advocate for public education and a proud member of a family that has called Lee County home for more than 80 years. I thought long and hard before deciding to speak tonight. I did not come here to make a political statement. I came because it's the right thing to do, for our schools, for our children, and for our future. Many of you in this room know me. You know my family. You know what I stand for, and you know what our family stands for. You know I would not put myself in the middle of a political firestorm if it weren't worth it. But the future of our community is worth it. My family has deep roots in Lee County. We've served as public servants, elected officials, business owners, and educators. We've worked hard to make Lee County a better place, and tonight, I stand before you, again, not just as a superintendent, but someone who believes this county's future depends on the strength of our public education. Let me begin by expressing appreciation for proposing to fully fund our capital request and for the increase included in the proposed current budget. Every dollar matters, and we are thankful. But let me be clear, this increase largely offsets rising costs, such as materials, utilities, retirement, and employee benefits. It covers survival, not progress. It leaves very little room to address our most urgent needs or to make meaningful improvements. I would be doing our students, our employees, and you a disservice if I pretended it was enough, because it is not. Our most urgent need continues to be our classified staff. The people who drive our buses, serve our food, clean our schools, answer our phones, and support our students each and every day. They are the backbone of our school system. Last year, we took one small step forward by providing a modest raise, made possible only by physical responsibility and cuts. But I need to be clear, there is nothing left to cut. And while I often hear the narrative that if the central office or the superintendent would prioritize differently, we would have the money? In complete transparency, I want you to know the money to provide raises is simply not there. Over the past few years, we have looked under every rock, analyzed every line item in our budget, and made every responsible cut that we could make without harming the very core of what we're here to do, and that's educate children. We are operating lean. We are prioritizing wisely, yet we are still falling short because the need has outpaced the support. We also cannot undo the past. We may never fully understand why classified pay was frozen for so long, but that cannot be our excuse to do nothing. It's time to stop asking why it happened and start asking, "What are we going to do about it?" These employees deserve more than just our understanding, they deserve action. And speaking of the past, we must also move forward from strained relationships and old tensions. This is not about politics or personalities. This is about people. This is about doing right by our children and our community. This community will only go so far as its public schools will take it. If we won't save neighborhoods, a thriving workforce, strong families, and real opportunity, we must invest in public education and the people who make it possible. We are not asking for excess. We are asking for enough. Enough to ensure our schools are places of hope, learning, and dignity. Enough to show every child and every employee that this community sees them, values them, and believes in them. Often hear others compare us to surrounding counties and point to the need for increased academic performance to ensure that we are performing as well or better than our counterparts. And I agree. We should be striving every day to improve outcomes for all students, and we are working to do just that. But I think it's important to also understand this. The counties we are often compared to the most are significantly more invested in their public schools. Chatham County allocates more than 34% of its county's overall budget to public education. Moore County dedicates 38.5% of its county budget to public education. By comparison, last year, 20.8% of the county's budget went to Lee County Schools. And based on anticipated revenue, fully funding our request this year would have brought that number up to just over 24%, still far below our neighboring counties. I share this not to criticize, but to underscore a simple truth. We cannot expect first-class results from a system that is funded as second-tier. If we want better, we must invest better. Our staff, our students, and our community deserve nothing less. I fully understand the position that you are in. No one takes lightly the idea of raising taxes, especially in a political climate where every decision you make is scrutinized. And I appreciate the desire to be physically responsible and conservative to protect our citizens. But I would offer this. Growth comes with responsibility. You cannot welcome and build new neighborhoods, new families, or new industries and not expect public services, especially our school system, to grow with them. The burden we now feel is not from excess, it's from momentum. The kind of momentum that demands we make bold decisions today to secure the stability of tomorrow. Avoiding tough choices may feel safe in the moment, but it often comes at a higher cost later, whether that's overcrowded schools, underpaid staff, or missed opportunities for our children. Investment now prevents crises later. And that's not politics, that's stewardship. I understand that you all have the option later on in the agenda to waive your own policy and vote on the budget the same night as the public hearing. I urge you not to do that. I urge you not to do that and to demonstrate that public input matters and that your minds and hearts are open to doing what is right. So tonight, I speak to you not just as a superintendent, but as a son of Lee County. Make a decision not for this moment, but for the next generation, for the next twenty, thirty, or forty years. Do not approve this proposed budget. Do what's right, not what's easy. Lead with caution, but conviction. Make the courageous choice the one that says our children are worth it, our employees are worth it, and our future is worth it. You have the opportunity to say with your vote that Lee County believes in its people and it invests in its promise. This is your moment. Choose boldness. Choose progress. Choose a legacy that lifts this county forward. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. And thank you for having the courage to lead, the heart to listen, and the vision to do what's right.
Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sherilyn Womack. I live at sixteen fifteen Boone Trail Drive in Sanford, North Carolina. I proudly serve as a chair of the Lee County Board of Education. I'm also a retired lieutenant colonel with thirty-three years of active duty, including two combat tours. I'm the former North Carolina State Social Services Commissioner. I've done backpack for kids for years in this county, which means going door-to-door to feed our children, even during COVID. Also, worked in the Jamaican Death Village, where we teach women to sew, so they had the opportunity to prepare for their children to go to school. I tell you this not to brag, but to let you know where my heart is and where my passion is. This board, our new superintendent and the caring administration, has been tasked to lead teachers and students through school years full of challenges and, quite frankly, miracles. I didn't come here tonight to play politics; I came here to speak the truth. Because while I've seen the face of battle overseas, I've also seen the battlefield our teachers and our staff face every single day: underfunded classrooms, outdated materials, overworked educators, multiple unfunded mandates, a bus garage that even your chair, Chairman Smith, has deemed unsafe, an auditorium and classrooms spaced that has been delayed over a decade, students who need far more than a textbook and a test. So let me be clear: it didn't take me thirty-three years of active duty, two tours of combat to recognize a war when I see one. There is a war against traditional public schools, and it's not fought with bullets; it's fought with budget cuts, silence, and neglect. I didn't survive the war zone to come back home and watch our teachers and kids be treated like collateral damage. Our students and our staff show up every day and give their best. They're not asking for praise; they're asking for backup. And quite frankly, it's past time we stop applauding their resilience and start funding with reality. Meanwhile, our neighbors are stepping up. Harnett County plans to fully fund their school board's request. Chatham County continues to raise their teacher pay and support the classrooms. Moore County is investing both people and buildings that directly impact student learning. Derrick County, the one we brought before you in reference to a five-on-five plan. The one thing that they said that stood out the most in that meeting was when the school board came to the county commissioners, their first answer was always "yes." Didn't mean it'd always happen, but at least that dialogue was open. Are we really okay falling behind while our neighbors are moving forward? So let's be honest: you cannot build a strong, safe, thriving community on unfunded schools. We hear a lot about school choice. I support options, but for most families in Lee County, traditional public schools aren't just the -- they are actually their only choice. But quite frankly, I want Lee County schools to become the best choice, and we're on that path. That's why we have a great superintendent. We do not turn families away. Recently, a private school reportedly informed students that they wouldn't be returning because they were not a proper fit. That would never happen in our public schools. No parent will ever receive a letter saying their child isn't the right fit for us. So let's be clear about the realities of choices. Private schools aren't affordable for most families, even with the vouchers. Parents are still responsible for the meals, transportation, and sometimes the uniforms. Charter schools often use lotteries, and they are not bound by the same mandates that traditional public schools are. And when students leave public schools, their funding leaves with them while the responsibility remains behind. And here's what I really want you to hear tonight. And this is not theory; it is a fact. National research shows that students from well-funded schools are fifteen percent less likely to be arrested as adults. In North Carolina, increased investment led to a seven-point-seven percent drop in school-based crime last year, down to just eight-point-one incidents per one thousand students. That's not politics. That's public safety. That's a smart investment. Let's fund our schools and fund our future, because when we invest in education, we don't just raise the test scores; we raise hope. We lower crime. We stabilize families. We grow the local workforce. And we show the world that Lee County puts its money where its values are. So tonight, I don't just ask for your vote to reconsider the budget. I challenge your carriage. Let this be the year we stop asking, "Can we afford to fund our schools?", and start asking, "Can we afford not to support our schools?" Because whether you sit on the school board or the board of commissioners, we are all on that same team. We serve the same children, the same families, and the same future. So here's my call to action: let's stop the excuses. Let's end the delays. Let's make history. Let's show our community what leadership looks like when it puts people before politics, children before caution. We're all sworn in oath to serve. So let's serve boldly. Let's serve together, and let's fully fund our schools, because Lee County deserves nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Amy Watson, anyone in support of the current budget proposal?
Hi, my name is Emily York. I live at three fifteen North Steel Street, Sanford, North Carolina. I am reading on behalf of a former teacher. And I'm going to read the statement that she wrote. And I am definitely against this budget. And so is she. Says, "Hello, my name is Alicia Connor, and I worked at Southern Lee High School as a math teacher for fourteen years, from two thousand eight until two thousand twenty-two. Prior to moving to North Carolina, I also taught for three years in Ohio, where I earned both my bachelor's and master's degree in education. In my fourteen years at Southern Lee, we had a recession, multiple curriculum changes, and a pandemic. I taught a very wide range of students, from those who went to Ivy League universities to students who had never stepped foot inside an actual school until they moved to Sanford. I taught lots of different math courses over those years, but I did spend many years teaching Math I, formerly Algebra I, which has always been a tested subject. There were a variety of reasons I chose to leave Lee County in two thousand twenty-two and move to Wake County schools, but first and foremost was the salary. There didn't seem to be any way to increase my base pay. There was no assistant to help teachers obtain National Board certification, which would increase the base pay by twelve percent. All the while, my cost of living was ever increasing. I still live in Lee County, in Southern Lee District even, and I don't think I could continue living in the house I bought in two thousand seventeen with my property taxes increasing as they have while making what I did as a teacher in Lee County. My heart is still in Lee County. My children were born here. We live here. We shop here, but I can't afford to work here. My husband is also a teacher who worked at Wesley Middle School from two thousand eight to December two thousand eighteen. He made the decision to transfer to Wake County Schools first, which was the catalyst I needed to make the same choice for myself. When you have two teachers in the same household choosing to commute thirty to forty minutes each day to make ends meet, there is a systematic problem that must be addressed. I am writing this not because I want to come back and work in Lee County, but because all of the experienced teachers in the county who will hopefully someday soon make enough money to choose to stay rather than leave. This county cannot survive without experienced teachers who are willing to work for the children, and I fear that by not acting, this board will be effectively pushing out teachers just like me. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone for the current budget request?
I had received a message I'd like to read on somebody's behalf. So this is from Ms. Ashley Wilson, two-two-one-three Cool Springs Road. So I'm gonna go ahead and start reading. I'll just read directly what she said. "How embarrassing for Lee County that Harnett County has just made it super clear that they appreciate their staff and value their students while Lee County students and staff still beg for morsels while other budget items are prioritized. What is more important than our children? Nothing. You're showing your county, your constituents, and your voters what matters most to you, and it's abundantly clear it is not the well-being of Lee County schools, staff, and students. This is not a new issue. When will you actually take the time to hear your county? When will it finally matter enough? Respectfully, Ashley Wilson."
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jim Womack, sixteen fifteen Boone Trail Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the budget in general. First off, let me just say that I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I know it's -- and I really appreciate the fact that you didn't hold everybody to a three-minute time limit tonight, because there are some people with some meaningful things to say, and they should be heard. I am also a trustee of the Central Carolina Community College, and I am not speaking on behalf of the college at this time. I do -- I should comment, though, that there are some pluses and minuses in my mind of this budget, and one of the real pluses is the fact that this Board of Commissioners continues to fund our community college at a level that meets or exceeds what most counties do for their community colleges. I think your commitment to higher education is commendable, and I give you high marks for that for years of commitment to the college, in particular, the wise acquisition of the Moore Center, and its future portends great things for this county. So nothing I'm gonna say tonight should detract from the credit you deserve on that. The second thing I will commend you on is the fact that you've chosen wisely to stay to a no-tax increase pledge, which I think is really good. You know, I can't imagine how some of these fixed-income seniors are gonna get -- are gonna continue to pay for their mortgages and having to make decisions about food and medicine and that sort of thing in a period which is just now starting to taper off from the high inflation four years we just weathered. So I would -- I commend you for that as well. Now, having said that, I think that you had the trifecta of failing on three different avenues in this particular budget. The first avenue has already been well-recognized, and that's in capital spending. I think this board missed the boat on the capital but on the capital plan, the CIP this year. I think you recognized that by withdrawing the CIP and basically scrubbing a lot of what was in there. And I think I heard an admission of failure at the last meeting of this board, when everyone all of a sudden had a blinding flash of the obvious about, "Well, maybe in the future we need to be looking at operational costs that go with our capital expenses." You know, to that, I give you a one-word response: duh. Frankly, it's mind-boggling to me that we have invested so heavily into non-mandatory, non-urgent commitments in this county, which I think in retrospect, we all recognize were not wise investments, kinda like the Randy Parton Theater up in Halifax County. You know, when the bond was offered to do an athletic park for twenty-five million, we probably should have taken the people at their word and kept it to twenty-five million. Okay? And if private investors wanted to come in and supplement that or come in with a different plan, that would have been fine. But that's not what we did. We doubled down and we raised the amount up, and now we're getting ready to get the other shoe to fall. And that other shoe that's gonna fall is gonna be the operational cost to maintain that place. And I've heard no one yet in this budget or anywhere else say that, "Well, we're gonna be able to cover our -- we're gonna have a receipt-supported athletic park," because that's not the plan, and you haven't told the citizens that. And ninety-five percent of the citizens in this county will maybe never step foot in that athletic park, will never take advantage of it, but yet they're gonna be subsidizing it for years. It's gonna be very similar to the bad plan we had for this facility when we first put it in. Should have been fully funded, should have been receipt-supported, should have been, you know, more wisely invested. And yet, at the same window of time, we did the same thing with the new public library, something that wasn't urgent, that wasn't necessary, but I guess because it's been standing as a requirement for so many years, we decide, "Well, we're just gonna double down and do it now while we're growing with rapid growth in this county." And now we have to staff it up. And now we've got a library that's bigger than what we need, probably, that's got more staff requirements, five new staff requirements, okay, that all of a sudden in this year, we're gonna have a recurring cost for those operational staff, and there's no receipts to support that whatsoever, none. So the taxpayers are now burdened with that for the foreseeable future. So I look at that, so I say, "We failed on capital funding." And then I say, "You know, we failed on staffing. Our staffing priorities ought to match up to what our strategic plan says in the county." And yet, I see no resemblance to anything we're doing in this budget this year to what's in our strategic plan. Our strategic plan is very lofty, I'll grant you. It doesn't have a lot of granular detail to it, but the strategic plan has no resemblance to what we're doing here in this budget. I mean, we don't talk about how unimportant public education is or how unimportant the sheriff is. I mean, we talk about how important those things are, and yet, we're not funding them at the levels that were requested. We're not giving -- we told the sheriff zero staff increase when he needed jailers, when he needed help, and yet, we're gonna get five new library assistants or five new people for the library, and we're gonna get five new people to the athletic park. At least, that's what the budget document reflects. That's ten full-time equivalents, recurring costs for the foreseeable future, very little, if any, receipt support for any of that. And yet, that's what we did in the budget. So I say we failed on staffing. And then on operations. Okay, so I did a little research over the last two days, just, you know, to curiosity, because I remember when I sat in those chairs back in two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, and I remember how we had no cooperation from the public school system. I remember when they were absolutely non-transparent about anything. We wrung our hands over and over about the fact we never knew what they were doing. Went out and bought millions of dollars of laptops without even talking to us about it, without even mentioning it to us. There was absolute no charisma, or I should say, no symbiosis between the two boards, none. And yet, at that time, we were funding the public schools at twenty-four-point-five percent, current expenses twenty-four-point-five percent of our total budget, okay? Twenty-four-point-five. Where are we today? Do any of you know? No, I don't think you do. We are well below that. And in fact, this budget, if we go through with this budget tonight, you will be funding your public schools at the lowest level as a percent of your total budget in history in Lee County, the lowest in history, at eighteen-point-nine percent. That's where you're gonna be. And the reason that happened is because over the last five years, we had forty-two million dollars in new revenue coming into this county on an annual basis, forty-two million in new revenue. And of that, you're only giving four to K-12 education, ten percent of your new revenues. And you've fallen behind now of the traditional metric of twenty-four-point-five percent, and you're now down and dropping, down around eighteen-point-nine or nineteen percent. And I gotta say to myself, you know, that's not by accident. That's by design. This is in a massive period of growth in this county, where we're growing faster than we've ever grown, other than maybe for a few years in the late nineties. We are growing faster than ever, and yet, at this time, we're diminishing what we're gonna give to public education. And you say to yourself, "Well, maybe public education isn't as important these days as it used to be." Well, ask any economic developer. Ask Jimmy Randle. Ask any economic developer, "How important is K-12 education?" You don't think that people at the state level don't think it's important? I know the Speaker of the House, Dustin Hall, does, and he's got a heck of a budget he's put forward to try to remedy a lot of this problem at the state level, but we gotta do our part at this level as well. We need to at least stay at the same metric we had in the past. If you funded the public schools at twenty-four-point-five percent of your If you funded the public schools at 24.5% of your total budget, like we used to do until 2020, if you did that, you would give them $4 million more than what they asked for this year. $4 million more than what they asked for. They asked for 25. It would be $29 million is what you'd be giving them this year, if you just kept at the same metric we had back in the earlier, in the century. So I'm just saying to myself, obviously, it's not a priority. It can't be a priority because otherwise, you wouldn't diminish that take that way. Now, I think that for years, you could understand why there wouldn't be a relationship between the two boards so that you would fund them at the level that they're requesting because of a lack of transparency, a lack of cooperation. They wouldn't participate in the space study. They wouldn't do a performance audit. Well, they've done all that. They've done everything you've asked of them, everything. They've had, in the capital improvement plan for years, they've had the Southern Lee auditorium addition and classroom space. And yet, we're kicking that can down the road. We're not even letting them have the facility that they need to educate our rising seniors. And I look now, and I say, you know, "Well, maybe they just didn't, maybe we don't trust their leadership or the central office." But I look, we hired probably the finest superintendent in the state of North Carolina. And I don't mean that to brag. I mean, they smartly, intelligently, did a nationwide search and then found, right here in our backyard, we had the best superintendent possible for this county, and they hired him. And he's done nothing but miracle work since he took over. I mean, the guy has bent over backwards. He's cut staff where we didn't need them. He's focused on metrics. Our scores have turned around. We used to have the best scores in this region back in 2004, 2007. In that window of time, we were still at or above state averages in SATs and ACT benchmarks. We were at third grade reading, we were soaring. Eighth grade math, we were doing great. And then, all of a sudden, we started this grand decline over a period of about 20 years. And that decline has continued almost unmitigated through Jeff Moss and through Andy Bryant. And here we are with Chris Dossenbach, who's turned it around. In just a couple of short years, he's turned it around. Morale has lifted. He's got teachers that are starting to really believe in themselves. He just went out, and he didn't brag about it today. He and his team went out and secured grants from Golden Leaf. They wouldn't, he wasn't compelled to have to do that, but he was searching for any possibility he could to find grant money to help with the middle schools where we have a distinct problem in this county. And he went out, and he secured two of the 15 grants available in this state for that purpose. No one's measuring him on that, but he needs to be recognized for the miracle work that he's doing as a superintendent and how he manages that central office. Now, we have lower-performing school districts around here. And these lower-performing school districts are fully funding their schools because they're reinvesting, in some cases, in failure. But in most cases, just in hopes that they can bring their scores up and actually make their kids better educated. And I will just tell you that we're not one of those schools. We're actually improving. And yet, we are one of the very few school districts which is seeing a decrease in the percent of general budget, okay? I would just ask you, take the time, over the next two weeks, to go back and check my figures. Go see if they're not correct. And go see if there's not something you can do. You don't have to buy that Coke building, okay? You don't have to buy a new building. You can lease that building and save money. Do an RFI. Find out how you can save money on your budget. Look for every possible savings that you have. Our schools are good enough, and they need to be invested in. Because, again, every economic developer will tell you, "If you want to continue to grow this county, if you want to continue to attract companies to come here, then educate them at the level so that they can go into the workforce." Don't make us, at the community college, have to remediate them to get them ready to go to work. Let's do that as a partner at the slower level. Okay, last thing I wanted to say. In 2012, when Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest, Lieutenant Governor-to-be Dan Forrest, came to visit Lee County, we took him out to Underwood Pump. Russell Underwood, who's a great entrepreneur around here, has one of the finest places to work anywhere in this part of the state. You can get a career going to work for him right out of high school. And Russell Underwood stood there and told Dan Forrest at that time, he said, "You know what? He said, "I have to interview 10 kids out of Lee County High School to find one I can hire." Five of them can't pass the drug test, and four of them can't read a manual." And he said, "I have to hire," he says, "I go through a high turnover before I get those good ones," and it really stayed that way. And I committed myself at that time as a county commissioner. I said, "You know, we're gonna do the best we can to put a boot in these schools' tail and get these things, get them focused on metrics, get them focused on getting kids that can read, write, and go into the workforce, or go on to higher-level education, you know, career and college-ready. That's where we want them." And by golly, they're finally doing that. And I'm so proud of them for getting there. So why don't we double down, and let's invest in our schools? Let's finally take care of them. They deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continuing with the public hearing. Anyone for the budget? Anyone wish to add against the budget? Please state your name as well as your address.
Good evening. My name is Kayla Wibaldi, K-A-Y-L-A-W-I-B as in boy, A-L-D as in dog, A. I reside at 995 Wind Race Trail. And I am here today, county commissioners, to speak against the proposed budget. I come to you as a mother of two children in our Lee County Public Schools and as a high school teacher in Lee County Schools and as the president of the Lee County Association of Educators. And I would like to say that my views do not reflect my employer. Public education does the public good. Public schools accept, love, educate, and serve every child that walks through our doors. We do not release students due to administrative prerogative. We do not upheave their lives and interfere with the future of their education in the name of convenience. We offer courses that apply to all children in all their levels of education, not just honors-level courses. And so therefore, we do not reject students who do not meet honors-level standards. Public schools are beacons in our communities. When there is an emergency, public schools open their doors. We saw that in September, October, November, when disaster struck across western North Carolina. And I pray that that doesn't strike in Lee County. But if it did, where would people go? Our public schools. Would our public schools be well-equipped to handle something like that? Are they in the great shape that they need to be to handle entire cities seeking refuge and shelter? Commissioners, you do not have all the power. You do not have all the blame. You are not single-handedly responsible for the problems in our public schools. And you are not the only party responsible for saving our public schools. A lot of responsibility lies with our state-elected officials. But not having all of the power does not mean that you have no power. As our elected officials, specifically to our county commission, you do have power to designate how tax dollars of your constituents are used, on what, when, and where. This proposed budget shows how this power seems to be preferred to be used, and it's not for public education. But you can fund our public schools. You can make all students in Lee County a priority. You can make my students that come from wealthy families a priority, my students that come from poor families a priority, my black students, my white students, my Hispanic students. All of my students, as public school students, should be and can be a priority, and you have the power to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else opposed? Speak on behalf. Going once? Going twice? Yes, sir, is out.
May I get the manager to explain the difference in Harnett and Lee County per student spending?
Did you get the question, madam?
Yes, I can. From Harnett County's budget message, I believe they are estimating, with their increased funding this year, that... I should get the underwritten page here, sorry. Their per pupil spending with the increased appropriation for them is $1,526.51 per student. We are at approximately $2,200 per student. In addition, our education funding going to the schools is 20.48% of our total budget that is recommended, where Harnett County's is 18.43%.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Could you repeat those numbers again for me, please?
Yes, sir. Our per pupil, excuse me, Harnett County's proposed per pupil spending is gonna be $1,526.91. We are at roughly $2,200. If you'll bear with me for just a minute, I can probably give you the exact number we have budgeted. We are estimating ours will be at $2,241.16 per pupil. And then, as a percentage of the budget, it, our schools' expenditures for Lee County Schools would total 20.48% of our budget. Looking at Harnett County's, theirs will be 18.43.
Any other questions of the manager?
Thank you.
Question regarding the school expenditure per student. Does that include the school resource officer's costs of the Sheriff's Department?
No, sir. I have not included that.
And the school resource officer's costs would be an additional to that 20%?
Yes, sir. The net cost for the school resource officers is I would need to subtract two CROs from that budget. So it would be a little bit less than $2 million, probably, with the two officers.
Do we have a thunder call coming in?
Yes, sir.
Severe thunderstorm warning. There we go. Thank you. Any other questions for the manager? Any other questions from the public comments regarding the budget? Opposed for? Going once? Going twice? Closing the public hearing on the 2025-26 budget? Move right along. Public comments of those individuals that signed up for public comments. I've got noted that you've already spoken. Is there anyone here on the public comments list that wished to speak on anything? Prior, after, before? You'll have three minutes, okay? Everybody spoke their piece. Thank you. Under old business, next item, I'll tell you what.
Commissioner.
Let's take a break. Take 10 minutes, please.
Chairman, can I ask a question about the SROs? Are the school resource officers funded directly out of the county budget, or are they funded through a grant that is received?
We receive, they are funded from the county budget. We do receive an amount from the schools that they receive. It's not 100% of what they receive for school resource officers, but we receive, we've got budgeted next year $271,352. I cannot get into the system to tell you exactly how much we've received this year, but based on historic, we've budgeted $271,352.
Thank you.
Thanks for that question. Go ahead. We're gonna recess for 10 minutes. Stephen, if you'd be so kind to put 10 minutes up on the screen, please. Thank you. Wish to call the board back to order? Everything went to sleep here.
He's back here. Or was. I'm presenting. He's just here in case I need him.
Okay, I lost Andre. All right, we're, we're back to order. We have the next item on under old business. Is the resolution related to the financing for the Central Carolina Community College Moore Center Bio Processing Training Facility? Madam?
Yes, sir. At your June 2nd meeting, the board held a public hearing regarding this financing and approved the resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the proposed financing of various improvements to the community college facilities, approving the purchaser and requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement. This is the next step in our process, and what we are asking you tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing and approving the financing of various improvements to community college facilities through the issuance of a not-to-exceed $3,820,000 limited obligation bond and the execution and delivery of the certain documents in connection therewith. And those two documents were included in your package along with this resolution, and they include the bond purchase agreement and the second supplemental trust agreement. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for the manager. Commissioner Martin?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Which one are we doing here?
Uh, we're on the old business item resolution related to the financing for the Central Carolina Community College Moore Center Bio Processing Training Facility.
Thank you.
Getting a little feedback, Bill. Did you have questions, sir?
Any.
Okay. Commissioner Vorbik?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
We might want to use our mics, it rains pretty loud. I have no questions.
Okay, sir. Thank you for that advice. Commissioner-
No questions.
No questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing and improving the financing of various improvements to the community college facilities through the issuance of not-to-exceed $3,820,000 limited obligation bond and the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection therewith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, and I did not see my ballot.
How'd that happen?
Oh.
Yes, you have your, uh, Whitney, uh, Ms. Parrish will be distributing your ballots, um-
Okay.
And if you, we, we will need a couple votes on this, you'll have to elect to vote by ballot first.
Do I have a motion to-
Motion to vote by ballot.
I have a motion to vote by ballot on the commissions and boards. Do I, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then I will ask the board to make their selections based on the applications submitted for various boards and commissions vacancies, as well as to sign the ballot and return it to Ms. Parrish or myself. There was one last-minute addition on Friday, Mr. Donald Nicholson to the Agriculture Advisory Board. Since we had additional vacancies, I did move that one forward for your consideration.
Okay. They have all the ballots and they're tabulating, so we'll go forward. Next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Warehouse that we pulled from the consent agenda. And... We have a request to review and approve the attached capital project ordinance for the Public Safety Warehouse Colts Facility Capital Project and Ms. Lisa Mentor.
Yes, sir. The attached, um, project ordinance was put together based on the purchase price of the, um, facility that we're looking at purchasing, and then I used the 7.5 total that is in the capital improvements program just as a placeholder to get the ordinance on the books. We fully anticipate that the repurchase and renovations of the facility to get it ready for the Colts, um, project will be, uh, less than the 7.5. That we did that just as a starting figure because we don't have exact numbers yet.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Sharp?
Uh, none.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Vorbik?
No, sir, all my questions have been answered, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
No, I just asked to pull this, so this is another consent agenda-
Speaking of mic, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. I just had this, I had this pulled because, um, you know, I haven't supported it since day one. I think we're spending too much money on, on, on this particular thing. I think we can outsource this and it doesn't have to be one building, it could be two buildings. And, and we haven't done an RFI, and a lot of times RFIs will make interested, people that may not have things for sale may be interested to do so. When you start looking, people may start calling. But also, when you look, that may give you a better bargaining chip when you're, when you're working with, um, you know, purchase of a building. But, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
I would have asked to have this pulled also if it hadn't been, um, requested ahead of time because I I think even from hearing what we heard tonight from the public, that we are in a position as a county to have to really consider what we're spending our, our dollars on in detail. Um, and I would agree that an RFQ should be put out, and we can look at long-term, um, options until we, to have a chance to reassess the situation. Thank you.
Do you have questions for anyone?
Do not.
No questions? Okay. We have the public sa-
Let me ask one question on that. I know we had talked before about putting out, uh, an RFQ or an RFI, and I, I, I believe the answer that was received in the meeting was we don't usually do that, or that's not usually done. It, we, have we decided that, I mean, did we put anything out for?
We did not put a formal request, but staff has vetted properties and searched for properties. Ms. Scamble can speak to that in further detail because she was the one who did most of the research on this between her and, um, Mr. Britt.
Thank you.
We searched, we looked at several properties that were, um, brought to our attention both by the sheriff's office, emergency management. We looked at them also with the fire marshal's office, um, both on the lease side and potential purpose, uh, purchase side. The purchase side was only evaluated in the case that it fit the suitability of the capital improvement project. Lease side, it was only looked at in terms of suiting the immediate needs of the public safety storage needs because we, um, had the warehouse that we had to vacate within a certain amount of time. We typically only see requests for information in, um, when, when things come up with construction projects to sort out issues that arise. I've not typically seen it in search of a storage solution, and I've asked some of my constituents in other counties if they've seen- I've not typically seen it in search of a storage solution, and I've asked some of my constituents in other counties if they've seen if they've seen that particular method of solicitation, and I have not gotten any responses that had said that that method had been used. Now, an RFQ process is a little different. That's a solicitation for design, architect, and engineering service, and it would be our intention to go forward with that process in the next stage of the project because that would be needed to get cost estimates for what the actual building plan would be.
Questions for Jennifer? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thanks.
Okay. So before you, is the review and approve the attached capital project ordinance for the public safety warehouse Colts facility, capital project. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the attached capital project ordinance for the public safety warehouse Colts facility, capital project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Can I get the hands for those in support? And those opposed, please? Thank you. Moving on, we have the 2025-26 funding of contract with the city of Sanford for planning services. Madam Attorney?
Have a vote to recuse Commissioner Sharp on that matter, please.
We have a motion, do I have a motion to recuse? Motion's been made to recuse Commissioner Sharp from this particular action item. Any further discussion? For the public's knowledge, Mr. Sharp is an employee of the city, therefore is not able to vote on this particular contract with the Sandy, city of Sanford for planning services. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Sharp, you are now recused. Moving on?
If we could vote on this, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, I'm moving on, that was my next, I had to change the screen here, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, the resolution authorizing and approving the financing of various improvements, wrong one, I'm sorry, hit the wrong hypertext. Great things here, too many pages, there we go, city Sanford. Approve the fiscal year 2025-26 funding in the amount of $768,601 for the contract with the city of Sanford for planning services. Questions? Commissioner Martin?
How much of that, what's the percentage of the city that goes into the planning for that?
It's a forty-five, excuse me, fifty-five, forty-five split, with us paying the forty-five.
We're at forty-five there, at fifty-five?
Yes.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
What was the 2024-2025 amount? I couldn't, maybe I just didn't see it.
Just a second. It was twenty-four, twenty-five, seven hundred forty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, so it's about a, okay, so it's about a twenty-four?
Twenty-two thousand nine dollar increase.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you know what percentage of work is done in the county compared to the city?
Restate that question, please.
What percentage of planning is done in the county compared to the city?
I have not been able to follow up with Mr. Downey to determine that. It will vary from year to year, though, I feel sure, depending on what comes before them.
Can you finally give us an average next time, please?
I will do my best to get that.
Commissioner Reeves, question?
Just one regarding, when was the last time we looked at the services that are being provided?
It is annual contract. I don't remember the last time the actual contract was truly reviewed, but it's been in place for a long time, Mr. Reeves, I can't tell you the exact years.
I think it's about time to have it reviewed.
We can do that going into next year's budget.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp, you're not part of the vote, so I guess we'll continue on. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025-26 funding in the amount of $768,601 for the contract with the city of Sanford Planning Services? Motion's been made, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Do we need to vote Mr. Sharp back in?
He's fine.
He's fine. You're fine. Moving on. Next item is the fiscal year 2025-26 Fire District Budget Ordinance.
Yes, sir. Included in your package is the Fire District Budget Ordinance for fiscal year 25-26. This ordinance was prepared based on the recommendations submitted to you on May 19th, 2025, from the Fire Advisory Board. I will need to remind you that the board will need to waive its policy to not vote the same day of a public hearing if it wants to approve the budget ordinance tonight.
We held the public hearing for the Fire Advisory Board.
Tonight. We held that open tonight.
Yeah, we had, we read it, and we didn't hold a hearing. Okay, got it, thank you. Questions for the manager?
You said you need a motion to waive our policy, motion to waive our policy.
Motion is meant made to waive our policy to not to vote on the same day of a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion's waived. Now we have the Fire Budget Ordinance in front of you, questions? Commissioner Sharp?
No, nothing other than, I appreciate the work that the volunteer fire department does, and as I said last meeting, you know, when the call goes out, I wish we had a better volunteer situation, but we don't, so I'm more than happy to pay for the volunteer service.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, just thank you for your service.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, thank you guys for what you do. I guess my only question would be, is I know when we did the fire study, there was a few items highlighted in it as far as 911 operating and calls and how things were done. I just, I guess I don't know if you guys can even comment since you're here, but I didn't know if any of those things have still kind of sit with you guys' concerns, or if there's things that are in the works that are, where, I guess, has some of the concerns that were addressed in the fire study a year ago, have they been addressed now? So, that's all.
Do you wish to address that?
I cannot speak a hundred percent to that, as far as to whether or not everything's been resolved. I know some issues have not been resolved with the fire districts.
In 911?
In 911.
So my understanding is, the question is whether we've made any progress on some of the solutions that were recommended in the fire study, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's better worded, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm just making sure I clarified. We have begun to make progress, I believe our main focus recently has been on the Viper project and getting that, you know, underway. We've been working with the Fire Advisory Board on some of the other recommendations that were made, as you saw on your agenda today. Updates were made to the service contracts based on some of those recommendations as well, and that took a lot of work and effort as well. So, you know, we're continuously looking at that and looking at instituting that, but some of those recommendations are going to take some time.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Where was I? I was going this way. Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None. These guys know, I've been with them about thirty years, so I know a lot, what they go through, and that's one of the best deals we got going on through the county, so thank you guys, and gals, too.
Commissioner Martin?
Thank you for your service.
Okay, so you have the, do I have a motion to approve the budget for the fire districts for fiscal year 2025-2026?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve the Fire District Budget Ordinance for fiscal year 2025-2026? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Cannot say enough for our fire departments. We appreciate it. Unfortunately, the day that the flood hit, my fire radio was going nonstop. So thank you guys, glad you came back safely and no one was submerged underwater. All right, next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2025-26 Budget Ordinance. As is our policy, we have to waive voting on the budget ordinance prior to, because of the same-day public hearing. Do I have a motion to waive the policy?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to waive the policy, not to vote on the same day of the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Do I have? Any further discussion on the budget ordinance? Commissioner Martin?
I expressed my request at the last meeting, which was to go back and find the funds that were available. I would suggest that we wait to vote and go back in and look at the budget again, hearing the concerns that were raised tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I have none, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
I agree with Commissioner Martin. I think there's still some more work to do, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, sir, just, I have, I guess, a few things to say. I know in the reference today was about Harnett County and their ability to fully fund their education. I don't like percentages, they kind of drive me nuts because you can make percentages look really nice if they're not given a whole picture. So, for comparison, Harnett County did their 12% increase to their teacher's salary, or their teacher annual supplement. So for 25-2026 fiscal year, that will account for the years of experience teaching, from zero to two years, will be $3,696. Our current one with Lee County is $4,100. From three to fourteen years, it'll be $4,127 coming in Harnett County, and the way our scales are set up from the state, it's really hard to know how to calculate the Lee County one, but just in the year zero to two, we're at $404 more. They're $9.1 million in expansion, but they also added 5.7 in low wealth funding. The reason why they had to do that is because they actually dropped their tax rate too low, and they lost their low wealth funding that had been provided by the state. There's things that look at, that the state does when they have low wealth funding from some of the for brag individuals and the way their county is made up. They didn't give 5.7 million dollars out of the goodness of their heart, they didn't set an accurate tax rate and got penalized for it. They also misappropriated $3 million in fiscal year of 2022 and 2023. They also decided to increase their commissioner pay from $11,000 to $15,000. So, yes, Harnett County is looking good on their paper, but what they're doing, we're actually still doing better in Lee County. They have seventeen, or they have twenty-eight schools with over 20,000 people, students. We have seventeen schools with just over 10,000 people. Their population is three times ours, with a county budget of $183 million, who are roughly 110. Their per pupil spending is less than what we are currently doing. So, that's a few things I wanted to discuss. I don't mind statistics or percentages, but I would rather have it actually compared to the states. Now, I know that Chatham and Moore was brought up, I didn't know that that was going to be something mentioned, so I didn't do that, but I'm more than happy to go through and look through those supplements and what that looks like. I do know Lee County schools, as far as what they're, what they pay their teachers or how that's structured, it's really hard to find that out, outside of just going to the state. Other thing I wanted to, I guess, I don't know if I need to make a motion or an advisement to, a recommendation for the, I know the sheriff was here last time and talked about jail pay. While there was a motion on the table, it wasn't heard, I don't know. What I would like to ask is that the manager goes and looks at, or advises HR to go and look at what that actually looks like. So a quarter cent would have given what the sheriff was looking for, but what does that look like three to five years from now? What does that look like when we add, if and when we get to a larger jail, which we need? What does that look like downstream versus just a knee-jerk reaction of increasing it a quarter of a penny? I'd like to, for this next coming up year, if the county manager can start looking into what that kind of looks like with counties that are around us and what that is comparable to. I know the sheriff did bring in some information, but I think I'd like a long-term scope of what that looks like. Is it, and I know when he recommended a, to only be one pay grade off of the deputies, is that truly what he needs? So, I feel like how short of that item was brought to our attention in the budget, that it requires a little bit more work around if that's truly what he needs. Does that need to be a motion? No, or can I just ask?
Are you recommending for next year, or you want a current increase?
No, next.
Okay. Can, just for clarification?
I think a motion would be appropriate, and then that, because it's not changing anything with this budget, it's just, I think it's just directing HR and the county manager to look at like long-term needs of the detention pay.
Yes, okay, yes, ma'am.
Do we have two motions on the floor?
No, but we do have a motion to direct HR to look at long-term, was it costs for detention?
So, the detention, what the detention officers make, if it's his, I just, I felt like, I don't want to say the word rush because I'm not, I'm not going to take away from the sheriff's effort he put into it, but is that truly what was really needed? Or was he asking for it to help this, to help kind of offset right now, or what does that look like as a long-term solution?
You gave him three options.
I gave him several options, I did. He chose to go with the one that would raise them to one step below. Can I first summarize that motion?
Sure.
So basically, if I understand, you're asking that HR and I work together to do a pay study for detention officers and look at what the future impact of that could be, along with talking with the sheriff?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, do we not do that right every few years anyway? Is that?
We do do a pay study, every, a full pay study every five to six years, depending on the economy, and then we look at roughly 20% each of positions each year in between the full pay studies to try to reduce the impact of the full pay study from the year, between those years. So, we would, we were already planning to look at that, but it wouldn't have been till closer to next budget year. But I think Ms. Vorbeck is asking that we look at it in relation, go ahead and start looking at it in relationship to what the sheriff specifically asked, and showing the impact farther out.
Which would go into effect the next budget cycle, if we made a motion to respond to that.
If once we bring the information to you, you would have the opportunity to determine when you wanted to put it into effect.
Okay, I've got the motion. We'll continue on the discussion on this particular motion, Commissioner Reeves.
I think I'll wait until I'm clear on what the motion is.
Okay, as I have it, direct HR to look at a pay study needs for the detention officers and the long-term effect on the budget.
I guess what I was trying to say is, we discussed, I know, a quarter cent increase to cover that, is that truly enough? And we also talked about how we would like CIP project, and I know staffing is not a CIP project, but some of the things that come up, what's a three to five-year projection? You know, if and when there's a larger detention center, how many more employees are we looking to add on to that? So, is it, while the quarter cent could cover it, is that going to cover it for future? What does that look, what does that look like? I'm not saying no to him, I mean, I guess I am currently, but with the advisement that, I think for us, we need to look at what that looks like as a ripple effect moving forward, that's all.
Commissioner Sharp, questions on the budget? Commissioner Sharp, questions on the budget or her motion?
I'm good.
Okay. So, we have a motion, direct HR to look at pay, a pay study needs for the detention officers and its long-term effect on the county. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I have one more thing, sorry.
Please.
Okay. So, I-
Does this have to do with the budget?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. I appreciate everyone coming out and, and I know the frustrations that comes with budgets and how things get ironed out and decisions that get made, but I guess I just want to thank you guys for speaking on, on some of the things that, that were spoken on and I've written some notes down and would love to continue the conversation moving forward because regardless of the budget now, these things that they talked about, especially the, the people who have left Lee County to move to Wake County, I don't see these things going away or being fixed by what this budget is bringing to it. I mean, some of the stuff was subpar support for beginning teachers. I know that was something that got brought up in our strategic plan, so, and maybe that is a budget item, I don't know, but it's some of these things that I don't, while the budget could fix some of them, I do believe that it's a larger thing. So, one of the statements I wanted to make as far as the budget goes said, "I've always believed leadership means more than casting votes. It means making sacrifices and seeking priorities. It's why I've decided to forego my commissioner's salary for 25, 25, 2025-2026 fiscal year minus what it takes out for my medical. The money will be redirected to help cover some of the losses in our school system." Now, let me be clear, I absolutely believe our schools are vital, but I also believe that education doesn't stop at the classroom door. Our libraries, athletic programs, youth activities, these are critical to development of our young people, which is why I support them so much. All I hear more often than not in our community is, "We don't have nice things for our kids to do. Our kids have nowhere to go. There's nothing in Lee County for our children to do besides hang out at the Dairy Queen parking lot or Walmart." I hear that more often than, "More funding would fix my kid in their school system." And it's not because their schools don't matter, but it's because parents are desperate for safe, healthy, and positive outlets for their children. If we want to grow a generation of responsible citizens, we need to give them places to go and things to be proud of. Counties aren't in the private business sector. We can't open bowling alleys, can't open jump houses, but what we can do is create academics, theater, arts, areas where they can grow and foster just out, not inside the school system, but also outside. It starts by giving our youth somewhere to belong and something to do. When these opportunities don't exist, small mistakes turn into long-term consequences, and too often that means a stay in our county jail. That's not the future I want for our kids. So, this is not just about reallocating dollars, this is about reimagining priorities. Our young people deserve options, they deserve better, and I will continue to work every day to make sure they get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the budget ordinance? Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 budget ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to approve the 2025-26 budget ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Can I get a show of hands on the, for those in support, please? Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Moving on, managers' report, monthly financial reports.
Let me catch up with you. Okay, you have before you tonight, the May 2025 monthly financial report. The Avalorum tax collections are 102.04% of the adopted budget. Target expenditures for the end of May are is 91.67%. Emergency management is over this target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. If encumbrances are excluded, no department is over budget. The March 2025 sales tax distribution is also attached for your review. As a reminder, these reports run three months behind. We are at 1.7% ahead of sales tax collections for the same period last year. Glad to answer any questions on the financial report.
Questions for the manager, filling in for the interim financial director? Commissioner Martin?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Thank you. Moving on to the county managers' monthly report.
Yes, sir. Ongoing projects, the Lee County Athletic Park, field construction, the Field Builder, Precision Turf is finishing up sod installation on the diamond and multipurpose fields. Staff is reviewing fields with architect to compile punch list for the contractor. Site construction, asphalt installation with the final surface layer for the site is starting and will take two to three weeks to complete. The playground subcontractors finishing equipment installation and turf will be installed following the completion of the playground. Building construction, focus continues on the interior and exterior details such as painting, trim, bathroom partitions, and fixtures. You'll see here a list, it provided you a list of recent change orders submitted to me and signed off on. The library building project, construction continues with a focus on the building. Steel framing has been installed with final inspections by third-party engineering in progress. Interior framing installation is in progress and exterior waterproofing has been completed and exterior masonry work has started. As far as site work, the utility power easement has been cleared and Duke Energy has installed new power poles at Bragg Street and the entrance to support the building. And you'll also see a list of recent change orders there also. For the historic courthouse, the renovation project includes roof replacement with alternates for masonry and brownstone repairs. During demolition, the general contractor, architect, then the state office has identified areas of the parapet with deteriorated bricks that are not salvageable. The structural engineer has been on-site to inspect the structure and is now working with architect and the state office to determine best solution. Roof installation continues in areas away from the parapet. And you'll see there has been one change order that will not exceed 2,475 for the investigation of the parapets, the corner chimney and the window and lentils. As far as Horton Park, Horton Park parking lot improvements. Construction is complete. Staff is working with the contractor and engineer on a final punch list to officially close out the project. Also, rail fencing will be added around the playground area to the new parking lot to address the safety concern. Staff has reached out to the North Carolina DOT to inquire about signage with caution flashing lights or some type of warning signage for the site and will update the board as more information becomes available. You have a list of reports that are attached. As far as upcoming meetings go, we do go to once a month, starting in July, so our next meeting will be July 21st. That will be here at the Civic Center, and then you meet August 18th and September 15th. Here, all of those meetings will be here at the Civic Center at 6:00.
Questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't, I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a closed session scheduled for this evening. We have the ballots.
You're going to do the boards and commissioners?
She's got them right now.
All right.
Yes, thank you, thank you, commissioners. We did actually have two ties, one on our library board of trustees and the other on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Parrish has advised we can do just a verbal vote for these two.
That's what I was asking.
The tie was for the library board of trustees was between Christopher Beal, who is a re-applicant, and Connie Tucker, who is a new applicant. So, if we could have-
So, which one do you want to?
For the library board of trustees, between Christopher Beal and Connie Tucker, they were the second highest vote-getters.
You can either do it by voice and whoever gets the most votes will be the second, or I don't know if we have enough ballots. We do not have enough ballots.
Okay, we can do it by voice, just walk us through the process, or do you guys know how this is done? Do I just put, put up a name or?
So, I think we, if you want to do it, we can just say, like, all those in favor-
Okay, we can open the ballot for the selection of library board trustee between Christopher Beal or Connie Tucker. What's your nomination?
Connie Tucker.
We have a nomination for Connie Tucker. Anyone else?
Christopher Beal.
Nomination for Christopher Beal?
How many terms has she served already, Ms. Beal?
Some, Mr. Beal. Mr. Beal, but Ms. Tucker.
It's a Christopher Beal.
Christopher Beal's a-
How many did he serve?
I, I don't know, he's a re-applicant, it says.
Staff, do staff know?
I believe it's his second term. He's served two terms. Beth List is in the library, I think she was making a, an affirmative, but there is no term limits for the library board. There are two consecutive term limit for the Parks and Rec Board.
Oh, that's interesting.
Okay, we have two nominations, both of them Christopher Beal and Connie Tucker, so by voice vote, all those in favor Christopher Beal, raise your, yep, state aye? All those, well, give me a show of hands, let's do that. Show of hands of Christopher Beal. Three, okay. And for Connie Tucker, show of hands, please. There you have it, four for Connie Tucker, three for Mr. Beal. You said there was another tie?
Yes, sir. On the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the tie there is between Carol Fulton, who is a new applicant, and a re-applicant, Mr. Chadburn Spivey. He has met the two consecutive term limit, but he has been a good board member and a good chair for the past several years, so that wanted to be, staff had, and had wanted that to be considered.
Do we need to waive our policy? Is this a Parks and Rec commission policy or is this a board policy, commissioner's policy?
I'm not certain.
On the terms?
It's a commissioner's policy.
The commissioner's policy, so we have to waive the policy?
Yes, I would think you would need to waive your policy.
Is that the attorney speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion and a statement at the same time. I will make a motion that we leave Chad Spivey on the Parks and Rec Board, that's the board that, that I'm a part of, and he has did two terms. He's currently involved with the Athletic Park at this time, deeply involved, dedicated board member, goes, just goes over and beyond what most board members are doing.
Is that a motion to waive the policy?
Yes.
To allow him to take, okay.
Yes, yes.
So, we have a motion to waive the policy to lift the restriction of two consecutive terms. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now by nomination, we have between Carol Fulton and Chad Spivey. Do I have nomination for Carol Fulton? Do I have nomination for Chad Spivey?
So moved.
Motion to appoint Chad Spivey. Any further discussion? By acclamation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And anyone else?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Would you like me to read the rest of the results?
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On the Agriculture Advisory Board, all four applicants were appointed, Rex Hare, Thomas Hayslip, Donald Nicholson, and Benjamin Shover. On the Board of Equalization and Review, Joffrey Huff and Chanel Simpson. For the Central Carolina Board of Trustees, Julian Philpott, the re-applicant, was selected. The Joint Environmental Affairs Board, Berkeley Griffin Hillis, a re-applicant, and Malilla O'Neill were the top vote-getters. On our Jury Commission, Joffrey Huff was selected. On the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, all three applicants were selected, Vicki Atkins, Betty Mitchell, Dakota Wright. The Library Board of Trustees, as we know, Connie Tucker was selected and also re-applicant Bill Tannenbaum. On the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, re-applicant Heather Sinks Burns was selected as well as Mr. Chad Spivey. On the Lee County Planning Board, Derek Farmer and Chanel Simpson, both re-applicants, received the regular seats, and Stephen Faber and Kristen Millett received the two alternate seats. Diane Dowd was reappointed to the Nursing Adult Family Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And on the Senior Services Advisory Board, Cleo Bryant, Henry Merritt Jr., James Payne, and Dakota Wright were selected.
Thank you. Okay, before we go into closed session, Commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Martin.
A great show by Public Comments tonight. I'm really grateful for the, the thought and the delivery and the expression of where we're at as a county. I, I hope that we look at this in a, through a different lens as we move on. I have so many comments, I'm going to limit them though because I know it's, it's late. For the record, you know, I had asked a while back that, that, the last meeting that we go and look at our budget, I, I just want to go on record saying I did take the time to go through our, our budget, and we have seventeen, just as an example, I'll just give you one example, $17,000 in employee recognition, you know, for ice cream socials and Halloween and different things like that. We have money that we could have cut from our budget. That's all I have. I hope y'all stay dry and that no one floods.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovick?
Thank you to the young commissioners coming out tonight. That's a good program, so thank them for coming out and with the warmer weather, it's nice to see our parks are getting used pretty well. When I first heard of that years ago, I thought, what in the world? But those things are full a lot of the times and people using those, it's good to see those. And tonight, the public coming out in support of their feelings, I appreciate hearing those. You know, and as a commissioner, it's a tough decision to vote on where monies go. Believe me, if we had unbound for amounts of money, I would love to give some to everybody. My heart feels like that, but unfortunately, we're not able to, so we just had to make some tough decisions, so thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Just be careful on your way home, or there's some fire radiages. Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, I got nothing. I think I said it earlier.
I'd like for the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners to try and get on better terms. There's enough mudslinging to go around, and I think the state ought to be included in this thing if you're going to start blaming people for not getting enough funding. I can't remember, it's been a couple of years ago, that three Democrats tried to give supplemental increases and for whatever reason, the Board of Education Liaison for the Commissioners didn't support it. Once again, I find myself in the minority as I am on this board. The opportunity to get some funding, some help was there. That's all I can tell you. I hope we'll get along much better going forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have anything.
I just have a few things, and it was a pleasure to have attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Dinner. We had a nice evening with Commissioner, excuse me, Senator Jim Bergen sat at our table. We had a nice conversation. And Commissioner Reeves, your son, sounds a whole lot like you when he's speaking.
And Commissioner Reeves, your son, sounds a whole lot like you when he's speaking on that panel, so I just-
He spoke very highly of you, was actually very sweet.
It was very nice to-
Thank you.
Have him speak on behalf of the legislature. Thank you to those that came out for the public hearing. I took copious notes, and I will file these in my mind and hopefully use them in the future. I did visit the Horton Parking Lot the other day, and I want to say it looks fantastic. A lot of safety involved there, we have a sidewalk going down to the community, and as soon as we get DOT to fix those signs, we'll be good to go. Nothing further, I wish to just make sure before you all go, drive safely, wear your seatbelts and no speeding. The roads are slick, there's such a thing as hydroplaning, please be careful.
I move that we go into the closed session per NC Statute 143, 318, 11A, six to consider qualification, confidence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee.
We have a motion to go into closed session, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.